Okay. Well, I hear a motion to adopt the agenda.
I would make a motion, and I guess we have an additional request that needs to be added to the agenda for the outback.
Right.
So I would...
It's not on the front, but it's coming, yeah.
Okay, with that addition, I would...
It's... They went in and changed it from doing the whole street just to one block. She wasn't sure just how much they wanted, so, yeah.
Okay, with that addition, I would say we adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made to second? Vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The guest speaker, Ray Bledsoe?
Yes. It's time for me to speak, huh?
Yeah.
You know, I bought the Mountain Breeze Apartments so that I could provide affordable housing for members of the community. And let me tell you something, that water bill I get there, for water that I don't use, going into it, I paid $3,000 of a bill for before, but nobody benefited from it because the whole place had been vacated, but I paid $3,000 out of my own pocket. And every month I get a bill for about $458 for water that I'm not using, and I need some relief on this. There are four apartments that are completely separated from the first four. Six, seven, eight. Let's see. Yeah, six, seven, eight, six, five, six, seven, and eight in one string. Those will probably be another year getting them online. And I'm paying water for four units there that hasn't been used since I bought the property about a year and a half ago.
Does each one of those units have a meter?
No, 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 there's only one meter for the whole thing.
One meter?
Yes.
Well, I understand that you're not paying for the water, but you are paying for the meter is what...
I don't know. I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, where you have a water meter on your place, even though you're not using the water, you still get charged billed for the meter.
Well, how about the meter? Why $358 a month for the meter? Are you telling me I'm not paying for water? I'm just paying for the meter? What's going on?
Have you... Since you have no usage at that location, have you tried shutting the water off and seeing if the bill continues?
Well, I've got four apartments. I've got three apartments rented now, and I've...
Okay, there are uses.
Oh, yeah.
It's one meter.
I need those four. But they're completely separated, and there's a gate in between that can be turned off and give me a break on that water bill until I get those online and get some income from them.
And as Mr. Bledsoe had come in and talked to me previously, and I sent you a letter stating that you could remove the toilets.
Yeah, that's been done.
And then, once you remove those toilets, or if you're never going to use those apartments, you could put concrete in them so you would never, you know, use it. But if you removed them, and then our public work staff had opportunities to go in and make sure you hadn't undermined them and gone in and rented them, that that would be acceptable. Then our public works director said, "No, you have to tear the house down." According to our ordinance, you don't have to tear the place down. You just remove the fixtures until... But as far as giving a break, I understood that you got a huge break when you took over those apartments.
A huge break? I mean, $3,000 is not much of a break.
No, it was $19,000 and somewhat changed that way.
Twenty-two, twenty-three thousand is what it was for water that had never been used.
So, anyway, that's the council.
Well, now, I'm sure that a lawyer can find something wrong with being charged for something you're not using.
We have to pay for capacity when we have... When we take out a loan for a water or for a sewer loan or grant, we have to guarantee payment, and we have to establish how many users there are in town, how many, and you divide that among your user, and that's how come you have to pay the base fee. Because if you... What happens is if you take it off and you have a fire or something, you may not have that particular capacity to use it because it's gone to somebody else. So you pay to guarantee that you're going to have that water, and that's how those loans are set up.
Okay, yeah. But what about those four apartments that aren't used? Which amounts to half of that bill?
And like I said, if you cap those sewers off or take those fixtures out...
Well, those fixtures are out, but I'm not going to cap the sewers off because I intend to get those four up and running for affordable housing.
But we've talked about it, so it's up to the council to decide.
Well, I don't think we can really make a decision at this point on it.
I need to talk with Jeff a little bit on that.
We need to get more information so we all understand.
There should be a... The base fee that you're talking about, there should be a way that there's... Because we... This is not the only... You're not the only one who's had this issue.
Right, right.
That, you know, somebody has an empty house here in town, and they, you know, want the water turned off so that they don't have to pay for that. There is... There's got to be a base fee so that we maintain the possibility of that service, but there ought to be a way that we could, you know, take care of that without charging as if there were people living there. But I don't know what that is.
I would sure appreciate it if you can do that for me.
Well, I don't know that we can do it, but we can certainly look into it and see what the possibilities are. Within our ordinance, we need to probably take a look at that ordinance.
Right. Another thing we need to do with that ordinance, and we were talking to Jeff Headland, Andy and Daryl, and I this morning, we need to update those ordinances because they are so antiquated, they don't address a lot of issues, so that was something we need to fix.
Maybe that's the venue we have to... That's where we have to go.
Yeah, well...
Jeff, too, you know, we'll find out.
When you do the public meeting, right?
Ordinances, yes.
And I'd like to be at those meetings also.
We would probably have a work session first to look at it and go through it, and then...
Yeah, to familiarize yourself with problems.
And those public meetings are always advertised.
Yeah, because I can hardly provide affordable housing if I'm being hit like that.
Part of your rent on each one of those units should include the water. But, you know, part of the rent should be addressed to that.
We've just decided to start doing that on the four that are rentable.
Yeah, you need to do that.
But only the council can do anything about the four that are not rentable right now. And each one of those is going to have to have a new electrical box, a meter base, and it's going to cost about $1,000 a unit, and I'm going to do those... I'm going to try to do those one at a time. And your public works can come out and inspect with each one of them if they so desire. And as I get each one online, then put it back on the bill. I would sure appreciate it.
There ought to be a way that we could... That that could be done. It doesn't sound as though with our current ordinances and our policies that we have to look at those.
Yeah, and as you're doing that, could I be invited to the meeting?
Yeah, they're public. They'll always be public, and I'll make sure that you get called.
Good, good. Yeah, because I used to attend town meetings all the time here, and me and old Vaughn...
Frank.
Frank Vaughn.
He and I had a lot of fun. Okay, well, I thank you for your time, and I'll wait for Robert to give me a call.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I'll let you know when it is, okay?
Good. Thanks, Robert, and...
Thanks, Ray.
Yeah.
Take care.
Yeah, see y'all later.
Bye, Ray.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we're going to public hearings on the CDVG grants to Head Start.
Do you want to take this, Ricky? Okay, I'm here today. This is the final public hearing notice that we have to do on the Lakeview Head Start facility that has been constructed. I don't know that construction is yet completed because I think there were still some minor things that needed to be done, but it's close to being finished. And so as a part of the community development block grant funding, we needed to have this second public hearing. So what it does is it leaves it open for the community to come in and ask any questions, to hear anything about the facility, and that's pretty much what the public hearing is all about. And so we requested it at this time because we figured people would be here, so there you go. So is there any public that has any questions regarding the Lakeview Head Start facility? Okay, we be done.
Well, that was great.
How is it coming along? Can we get Robert just a quick report?
Yeah, we were going to move this weekend. Daryl's out of town. He called and said, "Yes, the building inspector's going to sign off on the building because there was a list of things that had to be done." Ninety percent of them is done.
You will always have a list of things to be...
I know, I know. And they're finishing up the bike path and putting the fence out back, and so we should get occupancy signed off on Monday, and we're going to start moving small things on Tuesday. And Jay Greer has got a crew for us and ESD to move us on Wednesday and Thursday, so we'll spend the rest of the month putting it together. Because we have to give 30-day notice to our childcare licensure to come out and certify it before we can have kids in it. So the new site manager and the executive director are going to come up on a day in September. They're going to do open house, and they're working with Brandy at the Chamber to do that, so it'll be in the paperwork announcements. And wonderful groups like yourself will have a handwritten invitation. Please come. You'll get more than just the public notice, but we're hoping, yes, it's finally done.
And it's a beautiful building. It really is. If you get a chance to drive on by, you might want to do that. It's really truly a beautiful building.
Look at the one side of the hall, it's not that big, and then you went around and...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because one side is just the teacher's office, and then behind break room and that, and then the public bathrooms, and then the two classrooms. And between that, you've got... In the entry, you've got two fire doors that'll lock down where the kids are so they can get out, and then down this hall where you have the conference room, parent's room, and then the big kitchen. So it is a... It is... I mean, one half is bigger than what we have right now, and now we have two halves, so it's really going to be great.
So when do you think that's going to happen, the open house?
Sometime in September. They're looking at the first part, not Labor Day week, but sometime after that.
Early September, maybe?
Yeah. Because we're... We'll be certified by then, at least the walk-through.
Now, will you be able to have kids, children, students?
We usually start the third week in September. Once the certifier comes out and walks through and signs off, which in a new building with the fire marshal already through and that, there should be a problem. If there's little fixes he wants, he'll still have it open for the kids, and then they come back out again when the kids are there in the seats. They want to see how it runs, and do you have enough people ratio, teacher-to-child ratio and stuff, once we're in. So then they'll come back again sometime in September to do that.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
Yeah.
This has been a long, long commitment on your part.
I was, you know...
Aiming for this, what?
Four years ago, because then we had to wait a year for the grant.
That was when you finally got serious.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but we've been saving cans and bottles, yeah, for almost 10 years, our parents in the past, so, yeah, they bought the land.
Pretty amazing that this project that most people probably think happened in just this, you know, like that, it's been a 10-year ongoing project for you.
And we're still doing the playground. We're hoping to get it done by September, but, yeah, they did the five-foot sidewalk for bike path and the fence.
That's great.
Six foot, and we've got the dirt filled in, ready to go, and soon as we get occupancy, then we'll play... Start the playground, so, yeah, it's pretty awesome.
And there's been a lot of community support behind this project, too, so it makes it really truly your project for Lakeview. So it is a Lakeview community project.
Absolutely.
It's beautiful. It really truly is.
And then I get to come back and just read to the kids and play with them, so I don't have to worry about how... What's working, what's not.
Or any additional funding that you need to...
That's right.
Yeah, well, you keep thinking that way because you're going to be a mentor. As soon as you show up now, somebody's going to be...
What do we do? The childcare center's going to be reading two times a month.
I have a question.
Do we have anything else on the public hearings?
She has a question.
She has a question.
I have a question. Did you get my email today?
Our email is down.
Still?
Totally, yeah. I didn't.
But we need to make sure that that insurance is in place before occupancy.
I will call then to the insurance.
Yeah, we can't allow occupancy.
No, because I know he came out and took pictures, and he put insurance... It was... We paid for the insurance as it is, and then once the furniture comes in, he's got to walk through again and reassign, but I will send an email to my boss tonight, and, yep.
Please.
Yes.
That's pretty important.
And I've got your email. I'll have him email it right to you because they turned it on at the new building, and it's off at ours, but it's not connected totally there, so we're just down in the water.
Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, Ray. We'll move on to old building, old business discussion on ATV highway closures. I did find out some more on that one after I talked to Mike, that it's legal to go across the highway, but there's a guy named Rob said, and Robert has been working on it, that he'll come down and help us get everything, and he worked for the state highway. And there's procedures and stuff we have to follow through to go through this to get this done. And so I guess whenever we get the forms or if we have the forms or whatever to fill out, I don't know how long it's going to take to do it.
Well, and it's kind of whether the council wants them to be able to just go anywhere on, you know, 395.
We had looked at it very in-depth when the request came, and the state actually came down and sent some representatives from the recreation department in the town to find it and everything, and we had talked to them, and Rob had worked on it, but there are some very strict... And when you mentioned it the other day, I knew we couldn't run up and down 395. There's no possibility of doing so, and so I knew we better do some more checking. I'm glad you did find that out because we have designated crossings on 395 and 140 as well.
I read that statute again, the proposed statute that they're coming out with. I don't think it has to have a designated crossing. It allows for it, but right now, I think the statute, as it reads, says you can either cross at a highway intersection or 100 feet from a highway intersection.
It's very confusing, the wording of it. It needs to be looked at by our legal counsel because that's what the SNAPU was before, the legal crossings had to be away from the actual intersections, and therefore it caused conflict, and we were trying to find locations, and we couldn't come up with any in our whole route through town.
Yeah, I think we need to have Jeff look at that.
Yeah, definitely.
And give us some advice on that, and then maybe get that guy from there.
Yeah, I think that would be really good because it...
Yeah, he should know exactly. I mean, he's from the Oregon Department of Transportation. He should know exactly what the rules are, and that's who we've got to...
But if you read that...
But if somebody had an accident on, you know, if an ATV had an accident on 395 or 140, then it would be us because we're the ones that allowed it to happen, and so...
See, before you couldn't cross, except, you know, in some place it was almost impossible to cross, and now they're saying you can cross anywhere, but that's almost as dangerous for them as well as automobile traffic. You're going along, and all of a sudden some guy leaves out in front of you because he's... I don't know. My... I kind of think some people are out there and they don't...
Oh, definitely.
They have to obey rules or something. So I think it's scary one way or the other.
Well, it's a lower vehicle, so if you're in a bigger vehicle, you don't necessarily serve to the...
I like the idea of designated crossings, and we had looked at two in particular, one on this stretch, the north-south stretch, and then the east-west stretch, so I would like to stick with that, and I think it would fall within the guidelines of ODOT, and so...
But can't we... Don't we have authority over what we put on our stuff?
What our stuff says? Authority over ODOT?
Well, I'm not talking about ODOT, I'm talking about ours. Yeah, we can. Ours, yes. But I will have to check into that, and then we'll see if that kind of thing can be...
I think it's a great idea, and it opens up a lot of recreational areas and possibilities, but I think, like everything else, unfortunately, needs to be regulated.
Do we have any more on the ATV? Okay. New business. We have resolution 909, approval of special city allotment grant for 2017.
This is the map that goes with it. And it is the same one that Ray put in for last year, that same effect inclusion.
It has swimming pools in the middle, but my little car is more like an ocean.
Have we ever figured out is that city, because I know we talked, one of the other names, it possibly is ODOT.
There is some ODOT property there, and they have the map, and so we'll begin with them to work on this if we get the funding, and hopefully they can put additional funding in.
That would really be nice.
Yeah, because I know Jeff said they went up and filled those potholes with sand last year.
Oh, well, as soon as this one's done, I have it.
I would move that we accept resolution number... Or adopt or accept resolution number 909, the special city allotment for 2017.
I'll second.
Motion made to second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to carry it?
Standing second.
Aye.
I second. Okay, question? Ray? Public comment? I don't know. Are you here for public comments?
No, I just hear the energies.
Yeah, sorry.
As much as we love to have people sit here for our meetings, sometimes it's not the most fascinating. And if people are like, "Maybe."
That would be really nice, though.
I think they come for communication, so...
I'm a communication person. You're right. I just wanted to... I'm trying to make sure that... This is Leanne Davis. She is the new director of the mentor program because I am retiring. I am, I am, I am. I mean it. Sharon, stop it.
I think I've heard this before. I've heard this before. I've heard this before.
What is your name?
Leanne Davis.
And yours is?
Kathy Miles.
Kathy Miles.
Yeah. Leanne started July 1st. I will be here through the end of September helping her get through the process, and I just wanted to make sure she knew who was home, so...
And if you need to know how to spell that, there's a wonderful article in the paper.
Yes, so, just a changeover because the mentor program's been out there now seven years. We just got fully funded for two more. So, well, I say fully funded, we're having to use some reserves, but we're working on that.
That's because I like this program.
Yeah, but anyway, just so that you guys know her, who will be taking over, and that I'm going to fade into the sunset and just do... I don't have the goats anymore, but I'm going to substitute at Union. Because it's only...
I'm retired now.
Because it's only seven... Well, I need that travel money, you know.
Yeah.
I've got to go traveling every now and then, so basically, just wanted to let you guys know in case, you know, things... We do a lot of things in town and about town, and...
Nice to meet you, Leanne.
Yeah, so I just wanted to welcome her. She's from Fallon, Nevada. She ran a mentoring program at the University of Nevada.
UNR, Fallon, Paiute, Shoney Tribe, RH National Mentoring Program.
Well, our winters won't be a surprise to you so much then.
Well, I don't know. We don't get snow in Fallon, although we did last year.
Yeah.
But I don't know, do you get a lot of snow? So it'll be like...
No, in the last couple of years prior to that, practically.
Because of the drought, yeah. But I was in Idaho for years, so snow isn't...
So please don't scare her.
Yeah. I'm out of here.
I found a place to live.
Yes, actually, in New Pine Creek. So we closed on it a couple weeks ago. Beautiful little place.
So she's going to be working. We're going to be looking for a new assistant, so the program's going to be running brand new with great new ideas, and it's going to just expand and grow, and I'm going to just be a mentor.
So if you know someone that's good with public relations, recruitment, fundraising...
Well, we've had people like that before, but somehow they've moved up and gone in other places because they've had such good training.
Well, we want the ones that have been to those places and come back.
So that's something we will be doing in the next couple of weeks. We'll be advertising for a new assistant, and hopefully it'll be on board. She'll... She or he, we would love to have a he, to show us how to recruit men.
We always need male mentors, you're still on this.
So, anyway, I'll be with her through the end of September. I'll be there as an advisor on the phone if she can catch me out at West Side. Mentoring is what I'll be doing in the coming months.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. Well, thanks for doing as much as you've done. We've done a viable program.
It is, yeah, seven years. It's amazing.
And that's not an easy program to keep going.
Is there any... Has there been any studies on some of the students that you started with to see where they are and...
Well, we just had... Well, I know where Taylor is. She was one of our first ones to graduate. We graduated two this last year. One of our very first mentees ever in the program graduated this year. She's our very first one in, so she just graduated this year. Our gentleman who graduated this year is going over to Clement Falls. What'd they tell me he's going to do now? It was going to be... He was going to be a lineman, and then that changed. He did something else, but Taylor Watts is up in Eugene.
Actually, she's in California now.
Is she going to California now? She hasn't told me that.
Yeah, she's been in California for about six months.
What is she doing there?
Uh, working two jobs. She's got, I think, a fiance now. She's doing very well. She's very happy.
Did she not go to school like she's doing?
I don't know if she's... I don't know if she's going to...
So we really... We haven't... We only have like three or four graduates so far, but we're getting up there. We do have...
That's two or three you probably wouldn't have had.
Yes, who would not have made it to your graduation. We've got a 73% retention rate.
Different programs.
Yeah, yeah. We've got mentors who have stayed from the very beginning till graduation, so we're up to 29 kids right now, I believe. We were down to 19 before, or when I had my cancer. I was gone for a year, almost, in and out, and it went down to 19, unfortunately, because we know how I am, I'm kind of a not a real pushy person, but, you know, kind of, I encourage people to join us.
I think you bypassed pushing on right straight to nag.
It's only because you taught a few classes for us.
Heavenly encouraged.
Heavenly encouraged, yes. So, yeah, so, yeah, it's, you know, it's been exciting to see the program, what it's been and where it's going, and it's...
You've done an amazing job.
Thank you. So now I'm just going to go out and play.
Yay, good luck with that.
Yeah, not going to volunteer for anything for a good year.
You should have lunch once a week and compare notes about how this retirement thing is going. Give me the travel money, though, I've got roped into volunteering two places.
Yes.
I got a meeting with you for Lexi House.
Yes, yeah. I do intend to substitute out at Union, but that's because it's Union and it's close. Yep. So thank you for your time, and if, you know, you may see her face around and about.
Welcome to Lakeview.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for our swan passes.
You're welcome.
Take care of that.
I'll be in tomorrow for that.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
L G P I authorization?
Authorization letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's L G I P, this, the government law, and it had on there, people, Marissa was still on there a hundred years ago, and somebody else was on there that had been in there way back in the day, so we...
To change it.
No, that's, oh, that's, that's his authorized signature letter. Yeah, but it has to be in the minutes that you guys approved it.
So we should...
Want to go here, motion?
I move we approve the authorized signature letter to the Oregon State Treasury, dated July 26, 2017.
Second, then.
Motion's made to second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
League of Oregon State Use Bulletin?
Sandy just mentioned it, and I was going to make a comment in regards to the L O C newsletter in the state and local marijuana tax distributions clarified, and I know that a lot of people felt that, that all of the jurisdictions in the state wouldn't get a share of it, but the initial offering is just that, every entity gets a share. But then after that is when the communities that opted in or continued and didn't opt out will get their percentages in a greater value, I guess. And I also noted that, and that's what I wanted to comment on, was that it is based on the number of, I guess, outlets or locations that you have in your community, and it increases the more that you have in your community. And so I don't know how many we will end up with, but with the grow operations, which also count, and then the dispensary or dispensaries, whichever may materialize, then we would stand to garner a bigger share of the state tax, and then, of course, we have that opportunity for the 3%, or up to 3% later on. Sandy, you had some comments on it?
No, I'm just, you kind of...
Was that they, that they finally clarified?
Some of ours did pretty well there, so I didn't have any additional...
It's kind of up in the air as to how the initial funds were going to be dispersed, but there's a pretty sizable amount to be dispersed, and I, it gives the formula there, but I didn't sit down and figure it out, but I think that we could perhaps start getting some pretty decent shares from the state.
Just like the state revenue sharing that, well, this is how it'll come under a state through that state revenue sharing, like our liquor tax, the cigarette tax, not hardly tax assisting. And I think we're going to start getting it in the next couple of months, I think. So, and then, just an FYI, I talked with the attorney this morning, and we are going to start drafting an ordinance, so that we will prepare a resolution. It's ordinance for a spend resolution in order to put it on the ballot, because it has to go on the ballot for that, we can spend tax, they can tax, so we'll have that finished and ready to go.
One thing I was wondering, since you mentioned the special, I mean, that it has to be in an election, by a general election, the state has called for one, and I think probably they'll move it to January, and it's for, I'm trying to think of what it is that the state set it up for, but it was a pretty big thing, and...
So we, we're potential, we go to January instead of November?
If we can't, go for the gusto, if we can't, I understand, we can wait.
I thought it had to be general, but they couldn't change that.
Well, that could be, that could be, this would be, it would be a special, I mean, a special election, so it may not qualify, but if it does, we should try to bump it up instead of...
That'd be...
Divinity in November, because it'd just be a...
Be 12, almost 12 months' worth.
I agree.
Have you heard any more from those guys from Bend?
Yeah, they're actually working on this property right over here, right now, and Elizabeth came in and got a new Luxe form, and so they found a different location, so they are starting on that, and then another guy, Clark Kimball, came in and got one, and that's right next to...
Maritime.
Maritime's building, so there's three right there, so they're working on it, so...
I would make mention, and Robert, I did a visit with you in regards to the possibility of more grow operations. Of course, the Lake County Economic Development Advisory Board, which I served on several years ago, went to the county commission and, of course, came and shared it with the council as to recommendations on improving our economy, and the marijuana industry was something that was thrown out, and the advisory board approved that and recommended it to the county, but they took a different route than the town, and I'm glad the town took a friendlier attitude towards it, because I have been, and I, my main push has always been medicinal, I think that it's fine that recreational is now available, there are many who self-medicate, but the thing of it is, is I've been in contact with growers in the medicinal world for a good number of years, dating back, I guess, three years ago, anyway, and they are primarily in the metro areas, Portland and what have you, but there could be an influx if, in fact, we have agricultural property in our community. So as we look at the annexation, I would just recommend that our bigger share of the pie could come from the number of outlets here in our community, and that number of outlets could grow significantly, because they are disgruntled with the metro areas, and so when there is a move, and I think property has already been purchased or secured in one locale that we'll have requests for, and so I just think that it's something we should keep an open mind with and be a friendly community. Could mean big dollars for our community.
We know who the Ben's are, and we know who Clark Kimball is. Who is the owner or the person who's going to run the, that third one?
It's called Amsterdam LLC, but I don't have a name on that ASAP for.
Do you know anything about it?
No, I don't.
I really want to know who that is.
Well, they're supposed to put it on the application, they're actually, I've seen the application, they're supposed to actually put the business name and the owner's, and the owner's name is not on that.
Then I would say it's null and void.
You know, so, because it wasn't on that.
Because that's, that one particular group has never been honest about, or forthcoming about who the owner actually is. We've dealt with the front person, but we don't know who the owner is, and I find that very uncomfortable.
I don't know, like Robert says, I think it's a requirement.
I think it is, and so all O L C C have this policy.
Kick it right out.
Because there's not, because it specifically says, it says business name, and then owner of the business.
And one of the, one of the things that we do have in place, and so does the state, is, you know, the criminal record, the background checks on people, and if you don't know who you're doing the background, that's on...
And you have to be, they're a friend, you, there's so many things.
Yeah. I think that's just for the owner, isn't it?
No, it's not.
Now, they've scoped out in the new, in the new legislative session, the last one that they've looked at real close, they said they scoped out, and it was explained to us, and Jeff Rehm explained it and read it, to clear it up, because I know you were concerned about all the workers.
We just heard from Kathy Miles and Daryl, we were talking about background checks, and they don't know, they, nobody who works in one has to have one. I said, "I have to have one of them to be a mentor for Kathy Miles, what?"
Yeah, you have to, you have to.
Yeah.
You're saying employees have to have a background?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's only reasonable.
But I really think that's a piece of information we are lacking that we need.
I'll see if I can find it out, but in the meantime, I'm sure we'll succeed what possible.
Is that, you said it, it was Amsterdam?
LLC.
And it could be an operational one already, and, because I think that David Undarus is going to keep his same name.
Yeah, he is.
With top shelf medicine, so I guess they can do so, and so there may already be one operational, from what she had mentioned, there's somebody that's in business, I don't know them.
But I'll try and locate that.
But the owner still needs to be listed.
Oh, yeah, listed on there, yeah, yeah.
I, we've always known that the most likely eventuality on marijuana product stores was going to be somebody having several stores, there was going to be an owner here and, and different outlets, that that was going to be the most feasible way to run that.
Well, I'm not too sure, the one that they wanted to put in over the old bookstore, because they talked to Rob Ford, and Rob says, "I would touch it for less than $100,000, because that thing is so bad over there that it's going to cost you that much just to get it up."
You would actually be better to remove it.
To build a new one.
But didn't you say that?
That they changed locations.
They changed locations already to say...
Where's their location now?
Um, hopefully on Main Street.
Oh, across Dover here, and right across from the other one. I thought we had a rule you couldn't be within so many feet.
No, the O L C C doesn't have that restriction, and so it would be up to us to restrain it.
But we'll see what happens.
And what, in the cable vision of this?
We want that to be known, that we have...
Well, and I, and I, I don't know...
You don't want it to be known?
The, I don't mind if they go in in that location, it makes not a difference to me whether they go in, but I, I do recall that as council, we had, that, that location was to be held by Charter Communications, I don't know if they...
It's part of their lease.
It was part of their lease, I'm just throwing that out. I'm throwing that out just as something to be checked, you know, into, but...
I'll just, just jump on that. I'll get on that, too.
I mean, it would be nice, it's, it's an empty storefront, it looks like, you know, I mean, it needs something in there, I'm...
I thought they had to have a location where they dropped it off, or whatever.
Well, they do. Chamber has, or, yeah.
But it's up at the telephone building, for the real switch.
But they, but they've got all of their equipment stored in the back, don't they, there? I always see...
Well, they used to, but they may have integrated to their head end, which is out on Ninth and Stock, or not Ninth, Stock Drive.
Charter, or is that...
Well, that's Charter.
And both of them? The specific powers out there, right?
Yeah, they're on, they're on the...
They're on...
Fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth Street.
No, Third Street.
By the shop.
Right, yeah. They're right, right down from the tennis courts. Ninth is Charter.
Ninth is Charter, this is where we're checking.
I'll go find that out, I just want to see if there's anything in there.
Otherwise, no problem, I don't guess.
I think they're still, I see Chris and Larry going, I mean, out of that building.
They go out of there.
I think they keep equipment and...
Council Communication? I have two of them, so if somebody didn't get one...
Oh, just to copy that. That's going on down the line, the number key, we still have number keys to talk about.
Fred Smith?
Right.
Fred Smith, GeoThermal return line water.
Right.
He's been asking about this for long, for over a year, and I don't know where, where he's wanting to hook in that.
Yeah. Well, I don't know that he does know yet, I did talk to Daryl today about that also, and he, Daryl's never seen the site plan of the building, you know, because he kind of needs to know, and then what I need from you as a policy is to directly, basically, to begin drafting an ordinance for our GeoThermal sale of water, and also to do a resolution setting rates, so we'll have residential rates and commercial rates. We may have to do a little bit of an analysis on how much availability we have.
That would be the first thing to find out.
Well, we, it's, if we did something, we'd have to put some kind of a percentage in there that, you know, because the hospital's going to be using quite a bit more with those three new buildings. Well, and they can't, from what we went with Head Start, Head Start didn't want anyone using their, the inject, you know, the new water, they said the return water was okay, but they didn't want any users using that, because they are going to expand, and they're number one, basically, in the school and lines, so we don't, we wouldn't be able to use the, that water, it's just the return.
The initial water?
Yeah.
The return water?
Yeah.
And the return water, I don't think there's that many restrictions as long as we return that same water back into the injection.
Finally, we saw that.
Makes it way back down.
So have we talked to the hospital about what they want?
It is, yeah, if it fits the bill, I guess.
Has the hospital set up that whole gardens, their long-term? Is it, have you set up for GeoThermal? Do they have an agreement with us for the extended amount of, of water that they'll be using?
They don't, in my knowledge, have an extended one, it's all the same in the beginning of it, but I don't think that was...
So you think that whatever BTUs we allot in them, they can add this to it?
I think so, and I know that Daryl did some work down there recently to prove that there wasn't...
There wasn't, Amber, it's a block.
But did we say how many BTUs they can get?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't, it was long enough ago that I don't remember exactly, we worked on that agreement for months, but...
I thought it was two, so if you're adding on that whole complex, I can't see that that would be within your original agreement. And if we could gouge the hospital?
Why, they just pass it on to everybody else.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, I'll check on that agreement and see if we need to update it.
But I do think that that needs to be a consideration.
Yeah. Okay.
And the prison would be in the same situation, then?
Right, and we just updated their contract.
You updated theirs, so...
Whatever they're doing, we did give them additional funds. And then, just as FYI, also, discussions this morning were, we really need to make sure that the Utley well, we have to prove up on the water right for that, and that we're using it, and so what we were talking about is start the process to expand that and get it hooked into the DOC line, so the DOC has a backup, but we don't lose the right. So that was some discussions today, and so I just wanted to...
Do we know, we don't have any ideas how much that will cost, or what the deadline is for that?
Probably 15,000, I think, is what they're...
How much?
10 to 15,000, so it's probably about 30,000. I mean, realistically, I'm not being smart, I mean...
No, no, I, I just think you're being very wise, but, you know...
And what's a, is there a deadline?
Anywhere from 18 to 30 is still better than losing that potential source.
Oh, yeah, we need to make use of it.
And then to lose, you know, like with DOC, we really need to make sure we have that backup line, because they're a major user, and so we need to always have that backup, so... Well, we're bringing some, you know, stuff forward, but that was just our discussions this morning, we wanted to make sure we don't lose that right, so...
If we lost it, who does it return, does it return at least?
So we have to make sure that's...
Have to do that.
Yeah.
We need to figure out how long we have.
I think that needs to be a...
Yeah, I think it's, we don't want them coming here, but we need, you know, those things come and go fast, so...
Yeah, we need to make sure we get started on it.
Yeah.
And the Department of Corrections started in 2002 or '03, was it?
I think the grand opening was, well, it was four, where the grand opening was, but they were all out there by then, so it must have been three, but...
About three.
Yeah.
And there's...
The grand opening, yeah.
Remember that?
And there's...
Yes.
We all got tours and...
Yeah.
And as, we were discussing, Robert, their grandfather for 25 years under the rate, which is a low, low rate, I understand. But then, at that time, it could be renegotiated, so something around the bend, but we, I probably do want to be there.
But we did negotiate a little bit better this time, so we're playing a flat rate, I think, just every month, so it's not, you know, so it's a little better.
Good.
Yes, Doug Young, who you remember from DOC, probably all of you.
So who's, who needs to be working on this Utley well project? Is that another Darryl thing?
Darryl, Jeff and I, Harold and I, as we speak.
Yeah, Jeff just said he just put a new pump in out there. Yeah, put a new pump in. It's up in the...
Just killed it.
That's what's sitting at home.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Let's move on to the Cassell Financial Services.
That was pretty interesting what you sent out on that.
Well, we've had a little bit of problem, as you well know, in the finance department and through the years we've gone through, my knowledge of two finance people, but, but there's still a lot more and we switched to this cloud that has been a total nightmare, a total nightmare. And anyway, so I, I do have some applications for the finance director position. And I just wanted to talk to the council a little bit about that as far as, you know, I, I want a panel to interview like three of the applicants. We have one that has some Cassell experience, we have two that have no municipal experience. And then you look at the fact that we're still, you know, catching up from these mistakes and stuff and so I talked to Bob Gill, we're quite a bit about it and the fact that we need somebody that actually has a degree or a actual, not just learned, not just been here, not, you know, that actually can go in. It's a serious position that needs some really careful monitoring and so, you know, I did ask to see about this proposal on just what they charge. Right now, we're already outsourcing utility billing with the company and then, which would need to be included in, in my opinion, in this proposal also, I didn't talk all about.
From the, so we have both things at one company?
Yeah, that would make sense. You know, we have, if we have to outsource, you kill the billing, which I am not quite sure why we do it, but, you know, efficiency maybe.
I think that was originally the original.
Yeah, but it, it's just something I wanted to bring to the council to see your thoughts. I mean, you can look at it two different ways, if we employ somebody and we have another job in town, we're helping the community, we're helping the town, but we're spending more, quite substantial more. Because if you figure that the salary range that was advertised is forty-three to forty-eight thousand and you put seventeen to twenty percent on top of that, you're looking basically at sixty thousand dollars right in that ballpark.
Close to us.
Insurance.
Yeah. Yeah, per, you see all those things, or you can look at outsourcing it, you know, and it's just an option that I don't know the council's ever thought about, talked about, and I don't know if that's the way we'd want to go, but I needed some input and maybe after we interview the applicants, we will know more.
Do, is there a way that this Cassell organization come and talk to us about their, what they offer and what? Because it seems to me that when, it's just like the billing for the water, we still have to have somebody in that chair out there that feeds them the information, so who, who takes that role?
Right.
And so do we have to hire a person at a lesser salary who just feeds this in or...
Well, and it's like with Tonnant, you know, she takes all the payments, you know, and puts them in the computer, so her job is fine and it will stay, remain the same, but it's just another of the, you know, how smooth we want things and how, just make sure it's down.
Current would be good.
Current would be great. And not having to rely on the auditor, the auditor is not supposed to get into the B B field stuff, we're supposed to hand him the financial statements, he does, you know, two days worth of work and it's ready to go, well, that's not what's been happening in the past, you know, so it's just kind of one of those things, I just kind of wanted to discuss.
So the Cassell quote is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred?
Right.
Minimum, so obviously probably it will be higher than that by the time we get through with negotiations.
But it could still be...
Still comes in less than your salary. Yeah, could still be, even if it's forty-five thousand, it could be quite a bit less than a salary. Who, and, you know, so that's one thing, but the other thing is, how fast would they do things like, you know, you need to check really quickly for something that's just come up and you need to, can, would we still be able to do that here?
Yeah, those are some questions that, you know, we really need to talk to them and I can think that they would come with, you know.
I think, I think we'd like to talk to them about it because if it's efficient, if it's accountable, if it deals with the problem we have and if there's that, as you say, there are those little emergencies coming, we have to write a check with this, how long does it take to get through their cycle or something like that, but, and as much as I like to see us provide jobs, we need consistency and efficiency and trust in that job.
I can tell you over the past few years, there's been some real issues with my payroll in my department, leave balances not coming out right, we've also had some issues with pretty substantial late payment fees on accounts because bills weren't being paid on time. And so, I mean, you talked about the salary, but if you figure in...
If you figure all those late payments and the late fees from the taxes and stuff like that.
Honestly, I mean, I know there were some wages written off where guys were overpaid, either in leave balances or whatever else because of mistakes that were made, when you figure all that, that figures, the salaries low.
Yeah.
I mean, I would love to have someone in here that we could deal with on a daily basis too, but we've got to have someone that is proficient in that job where these stuff, I mean, every month I've got guys coming to me going, "Why are my leave balances wrong?" And luckily, I've got Christine who's great and audits all my guys' accounts, you know, to try and keep everything straight, but then there's still confusion in what our audits or what our balances say compared to what these say and so, you know, it, it has been some frustration in the past.
I don't think it's just your department either.
I'm just speaking for what I know.
I know.
And how long would it, do you have any idea if we, you know, would someone come here and talk to us or how long would it take to get all this kind of organized so we have everything in place with what we're going to do?
I think that, you know, I will call them of course and we'll just see how soon somebody could come to...
Do a work session?
Yeah, I would think that, you know, maybe I'll...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think we'd want a work session, that's, it could be an hour. I think we'd have to have a special meeting, special work session that we could go for a couple of hours because, but a work session, maybe not right before our meeting.
Right.
I think it's imperative that we get an option.
Well, and like I said, I, I wouldn't mind to have two or three of you help me through the interview process just to see, but, yeah.
Well, I'd be mine.
I'll help you.
And if you need me, you could add my name.
As long as, but it's important, it's a huge position.
I just don't want to end up with another mess like we've had before and, you know.
Well, and it's not fair to Amy because she's worked hard to get it all set up and she tries so hard, but, you know, it's just every other day, you know, and it's not just the last couple of years that have been the problem, it goes, you know, and so, I don't know, but I just wanted to get kind of an opinion.
I think it's worth considering a lot, pretty hard for us, I mean, not hard, but we need to give it some thought and, and, you know, make a decision pretty quickly, so, yeah.
I think Travis is right, if you, if you not only look at, at the salary plus the benefits plus the fees that we've been paying and the, and the penalties and, and the scripts that you have to, I mean, how much of your time of Amy's time has it taken to get some of those things untangled? That's, this potential forty thousand is probably a third of, not a half, but a third of what we're really spending.
And it's really not quite the money so much as being stubborn.
Well, timely manner.
Timely manner and correctly.
Because they do, that's like proposal shows, you know, they do pretty much everything up to give them to Bob or, you know, the auditor, you know, but I, I'm scared of what has been done and I want to make sure that doesn't ever continue.
Yeah, that's my, I think we're all on that page with you.
I know Amy's been working hard on that stuff.
Yeah, Amy's done a great job, it's been better in the last six months and it's been the last six years.
You can't just blame it on one of them, you know, one person.
She's given that off. Yes, she has.
She has, literally.
I think she's drinking too, I keep...
I know, I'm sorry, she's just amazing.
So I will see what we get it set up, especially email pull.
And I would say ASAP.
Okay.
And it, from their presentation here, it looks as though they're pretty fast in regards to emergencies because it says accounts payable team members will include all of the above and they list those and then provide constant access for emergency checks, so they probably do it by computer and you have a printout on your printer in there and the text will arrive in front of you. I would think that's the way, that way it could be pretty immediate, so.
Okay, I will follow up when I'm on. Just out of curiosity, where are they like headquartered?
Utop, probably, Utop, it's...
Right out of this, yes. And they do provide training and so if we decide not to go with them, whoever comes on board, we can do, they have training online, you know, so when you hear that somebody hasn't had the proper training, that's not correct because all you have to do is go and take the proper training online, you know, so any of them have said, "I haven't been trained," no, you haven't taken the initiative to go through the training that has been provided. So anybody that says, "I haven't been trained," that is not correct.
So are, the person inputting from here would need to go there to get trained?
Actually, the person here who needs to know how to run the fax machine or scanner, you scan the payroll to them after, you know, I go through it. You, accounts payable, same thing, you scan it to them, they do all the rest.
So it's not put into a computer?
Yeah, you scan it or fax it and then they do it again, so everything is kind of... I don't know, I want to think about it or, you know, like I said, we'll...
Well, it's, it's an option that we shouldn't, you know, neglect, it's an option we should look at and decide, is it going to fit, how, you know, we're all, I think, in the same boat and they say, "Oh, it's thirty-seven thousand," we're going, "Yeah, right." What are all those hidden costs and what are the actual costs and stuff like that? But, but even if you bump it to forty or forty-five thousand, we're still saving a significant amount of, if, if it works.
Yeah, and then if you take the, let's just say that we are going to have utility billing included in it instead of being the vending company paying these guys for everything, how much is that going to cost and how much is it going to save? Those are numbers I need to get, you know, figured out, but it was just, I thought, you know, I was just going to see what they would do and I, I was going online to see other cities that outsource and somebody like Ontario does with a private CPA firm, you know, so they do do that, but this didn't sound so bad when I got their numbers back, so it's like, wow.
So Cassell does what we've been doing, working with them on a software agreement and then they also do the actual services or what they're providing?
You know, Reverend, does that include what we're already paying for that thirty-seven thousand?
Well, and that's what I...
Because we're already paying the fee for it.
We pay like nine hundred a month for the system.
Yeah.
So, you know, those are numbers I got to, you know, check and see what's in there, but, yeah, it's a start.
Yeah, that's...
Worth looking into.
And again, I can't help but think that while we think we're saving a, a person, somebody's got to be responsible for sending that, doing that. Who, okay, the payroll, so how do you get that for that you fax them? Who is responsible for taking each department's, you know?
Yeah, well, and that's stuff that we're having to log in.
Yeah, what's the...
There will be an adjustment right into going.
But we'll have to, you know, get the logistics figured out, but it's still maybe...
It's worth, it's definitely worth looking at.
And I don't like outsourcing, that's not, but if it's efficient, yeah.
Well, your best option is always somebody right here, but that hasn't worked that well for us. And you should not be doing both jobs.
But I will have to be.
But you'll get somebody, you're probably going to have two.
Well, that's why we should do this as quickly as possible.
I got to face that.
Okay.
We have anything else?
We have the letter from the chamber.
Oh, yeah. Whoops.
You're welcome. I did talk to Brianna on that, so what they're talking about is closing L Street just in front of the lockers there and nothing on Second Street, it'll be for, she said approximately thirty minutes for the kids to do whatever activities they have plans for them and then opening the road back up, so I don't see a problem with that at all. I'm absolutely for it.
And it won't be even downtown, so there's not that much traffic.
Yeah, it won't interfere with anything.
How far, how far down that street?
She said about a block.
So, yeah.
From Second to Third?
Not even off they'll go that far.
No, are, which way, no, it's on, is it on Second?
On L Street, on L Street between, yes, I believe, on L Street between North Second and North Third Street. Yeah, we had a conversation about that the other day.
I would, will we approve the Tordi Outback request for street closure on August fifth?
Your motion?
I just did a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in the second. Vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dennis wanted me to give you guys a little bit on the fire update, I was out talking with him. For structural protection, he has trucks from Will Ranch, New Pine Creek, Thomas Creek West Side, North Lake brought a fire truck there to help out.
Good.
And Lakeview, and he says the way it's going, that he'll probably be releasing several of those tonight because when I was there, they were in the process of doing another fire line that they were going to burn on that upper bench above Decker's house, back into the, where the fire's at, that the fire has came, back over the mountain, down to the road to Prink, but they've got it stopped there and, because they backburned up towards it.
So between Decker's house and, and Dr. Berry's house then?
They're, they're in good shape.
Okay. Well, and Elaine Hampton is further up that road, I don't know if she's still there or not, but there was...
They evacuated her.
No, she left last night.
Did she?
Yeah, they took her out last night.
Their family was like panicked.
Well, they have a truck up there now parked in her driveway and they were doing some clearing and doing more back burning up around her place.
I went by there this afternoon, it's looking a lot better this week.
Yeah, and they have three helicopters flying.
Yeah. Looks like they're...
For the first time, we have plenty of water for them to haul on, dump on and...
Yep. I was watching them and they're just going right across the highway and I bet you they're not three hundred yards from the highway after getting it out of the pond?
Yep.
Yep.
That's pretty amazing.
Dennis says from the time they started, it's about a minute response time.
Yeah.
That's how fast it's moving.
Took some pictures on the way by, it was awesome.
Well, and I went down there last night just so that I knew from this town's perspective what we had to be prepared for because I didn't think that, you know, I mean, I wasn't sure if we needed to start making plans, have any meetings.
Starts coming over mountains.
Yeah, it's pretty scary.
If it gets past the pipeline, we're going to have to get serious about it. I think, you know, the pipelines, their hope is that's going to stop it, anything that makes it that far, everybody hopes it stops.
It's a natural fire line.
Yeah, and so if it gets past the pipeline, we're going to have concerns because then it's going to have a lot of fuel. If it, if it, if it doesn't get past the pipeline, I think we'll be okay.
Director is training us and deciding to look at the pipeline.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, both scary to watch though, I'll tell you.
Yeah. They had two planes up last night and then helicopters today, so.
That's a good update.
We have nothing further, I will adjourn the meeting at five twelve.